Aloha mai kako. Aloha ianaho amaka maka mai kalaheki a kalakau. Velina nui me ke aloha. Mahalo nui no ke aku'aka'ana no kakou no kapono o kalagui, no kapono o ka'aina, a me kapono o kawai. Eia he olalano ea e kalelayana no ke koi'ko'i o kawai. He mea poko le valino. Ola ekovai. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming to today's November 27th board meeting and public hearing at the Home of the Board of Water Supply. Before beginning today's meeting, I'd like to state that our board is dedicated to providing safe, dependable, and affordable water from now and into the future. At this time, we would like to share a brief recording with reminders on public participation as well as virtual meeting regulations for board members as required by law.
Materials for this meeting under HRS Section 92-7.5 are accessible at boardofwatersupply.com/boardmeetings. The public may attend this meeting in person at the BWS Public Service Building, located at 630 South Baritania Street. The public may also view a live stream of today's meeting on our website at boardofwatersupply.com/live. We have been accepting written or oral testimony for today's meeting. Instructions and an online submittal form are available at boardofwatersupply.com/testimony. The deadline to submit advance written testimony has passed. Testimony received by noon today have been distributed to the board members. We will continue to accept written testimony today through our online form. Oral testimony in person or remotely will be accepted during today's meeting. To facilitate as much in-person and remote testimony as reasonably possible during the time allotted, pre-registration and submittal of a written version of testimony at boardofwatersupply.com/testimony is strongly encouraged. To testify in person, please register using our online form or come to the Public Service Building at 630 South Baritania Street. We have a representative in the lobby to provide intake and further instructions. To request to testify remotely, please complete the online form at boardofwatersupply.com/testimony. Requesters will receive an email containing links and instructions to join the Zoom session. Testifiers will have two minutes to state their position. A timekeeper will alert testifiers when there is one minute remaining. Once the two minutes are up, please summarize to allow time for questions from the board, then make room for the next testifier. Board members attending any board meeting remotely must be visible to the public to be considered present and meet quorum guidelines. Board members participating remotely must also disclose their location and anyone present at their location during roll call. Meeting participants who are calling or videoconferencing in, please mute your microphone when you're not speaking. If you have a question, comment, or wish to enter or second a motion on an action item, please unmute your microphone and identify yourself before continuing to speak. If you encounter technical issues during today's meeting, please use the Zoom chat to send a direct message to our support team. Their names are listed in the message to all participants. To open the chat window, please click on the text bubble icon on the Zoom toolbar.
Thank you. Let's take a moment to take a roll call of the board members. When I call your name, please say aye, and if attending remotely, make the appropriate disclosures. Vice Chair, what's pro?
I am attending remotely from my home, and I'm in my office with the door closed, and I'll apologize in advance for my voice because I have a cold. Aloha.
Aloha, Kabo. Board Member Brian and Daya.
Hi, aloha, everyone. I am in my office alone, attending the meeting.
Aloha, Brian. Board Member Gina Bono.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. I am in my office alone, attending.
Thank you. And with us today in the boardroom, Board Member Jonathan Conacher.
Aye.
Board Member Edmund Sniffin.
Aye.
Also with us in the room today, Manager Ernie Lau.
Present.
Deputy Manager Erin Koata.
Present.
Board Secretary Joy Cruz-Achu.
Here.
Manager Secretary Kim Hua.
Here.
Information Specialist Stephen Nordstrom and Wayne Maria. Jeff Lau is here in person. Well, Jeff. Jessica here? She's on Zoom. Okay, also, Chair would like to acknowledge the mayor's here with staff. Mayor, thank you for coming today. I think it's also appropriate that the Chair recognizes Chair's father, Dr. Jim Anthony. He is here with us in the gallery today, as well as his lovely wife, Auntie Grace. Hello, Auntie Grace. Before we go to the public hearing, I'd like to take some testimony out of order. Mayor's here today to talk with us a little bit, and so rather than have you sit through another 60-minute description of water rates, I wanted to give you an opportunity to share a few words with us.
Sure. Well, thanks, Nalayu. Thank you, everybody, for being here. It's been a long time since I've been given two minutes. I try to wait here to get three minutes. I, look, you know, I'm pleased to be here, but let me just say, while I recognize we all share in the responsibility for the city, I clearly understand my line of authority in this, so I thank you for at least the opportunity to voice a concern. That said, I recognize that your costs have increased all over the places. I think I read in one of the publications recently, so I have no way second-guessing anything that's gone on. In the spirit of our responsibility for the community, though, and I don't know what it was like for other mayors, but coming into office in the middle of a pandemic really elevated my sense of, heightened my sense of awareness of our community, what it was going through, perhaps in different ways, because you could feel, you could feel the suffering, the anguish, the uncertainty, the fear, everything, all of it was palpable. And it was no question that, given the adverse impact of the first of really three unimaginable events, if you will, with COVID being the first, at the time of coming in, clearly Red Hill, and most recently the Maui wildfires, that the whole concept of economic recovery is something we live with each and every day, and I doubt, even if we're blessed to have the next five years in office, that we will see the end of that challenge, if you will. In fact, if you look at the economic, or the recession of 2008, really, if you listen to The Economist, that, which was a very different recession and not multiple, which we've seen, because all three events have lasting economic impact. Took seven years to get out of the 2008 recession. So this is something that we're dealing with, and you know, in that regard, we've tried to stay very sensitive at cost increase from the cities, but recognizing full well, whether it's inflation, whether certainly in this case, the impact of Red Hill, but for that matter, electricity costs and so on and so forth, that all of, anything that you have planned is well justified. So I'm gonna say it again, I'm not here to second-guess that. We have taken some measures at the city to help the community, because in light of the recent Alice reports, we saw the Coast Current Report on 2023, everything has been as we expected it would be. It's sort of redefined the vulnerability of our population out there, and we certainly know especially that our native Hawaiian population is overrepresented in that, and people are subject to cost increases across the board right now that are really creating unprecedented hardships. So we at the city, in the power and responsibility I had, and authority, you know, we've deferred raising your rents. They're always supposed to be three and a half on the 20 owned properties. We deferred that. We're deferring your utility fees as well. We stay in constant contact with IHS. We're aware of the increased calls there. We were, and I'm really proud to say, one of the best cities in America at the distribution of rent and utility relief funds. We've actually recently asked for an additional $9 million more to extend that. We've reached all over 20,000 families. We know that it made a difference. It was our most needy families, and the challenges go on for all of us. So the only thing I would say is that I recognize your costs are real. If there's some way to tier your planned expenses, every revenue rate increases, that's the only thing I would suggest, recommend as a colleague, if you will, because I recognize that 20% in 2024, it will be significant for some. It may seem it's a dental life. Look at the numbers. I see how the models work. I see what's been said. But there's a reality to people who live paycheck to paycheck. We unfortunately have a disproportionate segment of our population living that way, and they will be impacted by the cost. So I'm just here as the voice of those people in the spirit of being mayor. Again, I've stood by this board. I recognize the capabilities here, the intelligence here, and the commitment, and you have my full support, I think, Ernie, as you know. So with that said, I just wanted to make those statements. Thank you for the opportunity.
The Honolulu Board of Water Supply's public hearing is published on the Friday, October 27th, 2023, and Sunday, October 29th, 2023, in Star Advertiser. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow the public and the opportunity to testify on the proposed revisions for the schedule of rates and charges in the furnishing of water and water service for fiscal years 2024 through 2029, effective from and after February 1, 2024, and to remain into effect until superseded. Chair recognizes Ernie Lau, Jill Cooper, Dave Embersold, and Kathleen Elliott Potting.
Thank you, Chair members, and also members of the public that are viewing this and in the room. I do want to recognize Dr. Anthony. It's been a while, sir, since I've seen you. Thank you for coming out today. And thank you, Mayor, for being here today. This presentation is gonna go on a little long, so if you need to leave at any time, feel free to say.
I can save this for you.
Okay, thank you. So we're talking about the proposed water rate schedule for the next, for the years, fiscal years 2024 to 2029. And today, we wanted to provide an update. What is that proposal? And also summarize the public input that we've received thus far, which we began many months ago, that effort of doing outreach all across our community. And I don't need to say this, this really stands for itself, you know, water is life. The infrastructure it takes to deliver, on average, 145 million gallons a day to almost a million people on this island, it takes a lot of infrastructure all over, all over the island. Water sources that are up in Ma'aka areas, in the coastal areas, wells, almost 200 groundwater wells and source pumps, about a dozen tunnels, systems, treatment systems in central Oahu, water storage tanks, about 172 island-wide that help to provide water for peak demands during the day, but also, more importantly, also water for fire protection. 2,100 miles of pipelines to move that 145 million gallons from the underground sources, our aquifers, island-wide, to right into people's homes, and we have over 170,000 customer accounts. Again, just a reminder, the Board of Water Supply, we are part of the city and county of Honolulu, but we are semi-autonomous. The authority for adoption of water rates rests with the Water Board, a seven-member board appointed by the mayor with the confirmation of the council. We don't receive any property tax funding, and these rate proposals that we're gonna talk about today do not apply to the whole bill that most people are getting, both a water and a sewer bill, and it doesn't apply to the sewer portion of the bill, just the water portion of the bill. And if you're like myself, my water portion is small compared to the sewer charges. These proposed rate proposals are only for that water portion of the bill and not for the entire bill that people are receiving. Where does our money go? It takes about $276 million to operate our water system each year, and this is what we project the revenue pie to look like for fiscal year 2024. About 27% would go toward our CIP, or our capital improvement program, which are the design and construction projects to improve the pipelines, water tanks, pumping stations, develop new water sources, maintain old equipment. That is part of our CIP program. And we do a combination of cash or rate revenue to fund those projects, but we also float bonds or apply for low-interest SRF, DOH, EPA loans to help fund the program. So it's a combination of cash funding and debt service funding, debt funding. About one-third, or about 29%, goes toward our workforce. It takes about 550 people here at the Board of Water Supply to make sure this water system is able to provide safe and dependable water service 24/7. And the mayor reminds me that we also have almost 200 vacancies, Mayor, and I know he always, the mayor always reminds me, you gotta get those positions filled. That is the workforce that helps to keep the water flowing for our community. About 85 million, or 31% toward operation maintenance costs, and a growing portion of our budget is now going toward power, electricity. Most of our 145 million gallons a day actually needs to be pumped water. So it takes electricity to pump water and also move water from lower elevation to higher elevations, where people live up on higher ridges, where the water is actually available in the lower area, and we have to pump the water up the hill to their homes. Now, this is what we did with the last rate increase, which was adopted, first went into effect in 2018. And we are almost in process right now and completed our almost 500 projects. They're either in the planning or design phase, and also a large number in the construction phase. And you can see almost three-quarters of a billion dollars of improvements. And this is based on the last five-year scheduled rates that we went into effect on 2018. You know, this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Dave Embersold to talk about the, some of the drivers of why, why we need to look at the proposed water rates and also what the proposed rate proposals are proposed to be today. Dave?
Thank you, Manager, Chair members of the board. So, as was mentioned earlier, right in March of 2020, big change happened with the global pandemic. And that COVID-19 pandemic with a near-total shutdown of the island's economy caused big changes in the board's water use patterns and customers' water use patterns. And that's important because non-residential water usage plummeted, and non-residential customers pay among the highest rates, higher than two of the single-family residential tiers, nearly all of the multi-unit residential tiers, and also the other rates in the pattern. So, big, big impacts there. That pandemic also started into motion a number of other things. Global supply chain shortages, for example, which was contributory to the very high rates of inflation. This chart is showing inflation, total inflation, in the green line at the top, going from 2019 to 2023, an increase of nearly 21%. The yellow line below that is the total increase in BWS revenues through its rate increases. That's only 12.5%. That gap of about 8% represents a fundamental decrease in purchasing power and leaves, has left the board in a more tenuous situation. The manager mentioned increasing power costs. This chart is showing, if you look at the dashed line at the top, that purple line, that's total kilowatt-hours of usage. That's been decreasing over the period of July 2020 to May of '23. That's great news. However, at the same time, the energy cost factor that Hawaiian Electric charges, as shown in the green line, has been going up dramatically from about a dime per kilowatt-hour to over 30 cents per kilowatt-hour. And as a consequence of those two things, the monthly cost for electricity for the board has gone up during that period from about $2 million a month to over $3 million a month. In total, in the last fiscal year, electricity costs were about $33 million, or $5.5 million over what had been budgeted. On top of that, everybody's familiar with the issues of Red Hill, but this has required large investments on behalf of the board in monitoring wells and exploratory wells to evaluate how far that contamination has spread and to identify new source locations outside of its path. In total, the board needs to replace about 17.5 million gallons per day of potable water production capacity, and as yet undetermined are the full impacts to both water quality and supply, impact operations and maintenance costs, and the ultimate disposition of efforts to recover those costs from the Navy. So in light of all of this, over this period of time, the BWS has done a tremendous amount to tighten its belt. It has chosen not to pass on energy cost increases to its customers. It's deferred significant replacement, deferred significant purchases of things like replacement vehicles and other equipment, and also deferred millions of dollars of less critical capital projects. The benefits of all of this to customers has been that, over the period from 2021 to 2022, operating expenditures have actually decreased by about 7.5% or nearly $17 million. This has enabled the board to stick to already-approved rate increases, and looking forward here in this, coming into this current fiscal year, the board has held its operations and maintenance budget essentially flat, only a 0.2% increase despite ongoing high inflationary pressures. So the strategy for rate increases is really about striking a balance. It's about that balance between safe and dependable water service and affordability for customers. And so some key elements in this strategy that are reflected in the proposal today are continuing to defer less critical capital projects, focusing on water quality and source protection and replacement, and treatment of impacted sources, keeping O&amp;M budgets as flat as possible, and making adjustments in the days of working capital or emergency funds that are available to help with things like disaster recovery, moderating those things to keep affordability as strong as possible. So what's in these rate increases? What is it going to buy? This shows, over the next five and a half years, the proposed capital projects that would be paid for by this increase. Let me focus on a couple of highlights. That first big yellow band kind of in the middle, those are sources. So in total, over this period, the BWS would invest about $399 million in new sources. This includes monitoring and exploratory wells in the near-term years, the initiation of construction for the Haleloa Seawater Desalination Facility, and in the later years, replacement of those sources necessitated by Red Hill. Moving up in colors, the blue, green, and dark blue bands, those are security expenditures, pump renewal and replacements, and reservoirs. And you can see those expenditures are fairly consistent from year to year with a bump up in reservoir replacement, new eight-and-a-half-million-gallon reservoir in fiscal year '29. The big brown band at the top, that's another large area of investment. That's for new and replacement pipelines. That's the efforts to keep water main breaks down by ramping up pipeline replacement. In total, that would pay for $425 million, or about 41 miles of new pipelines. I think it's important to focus on customers. They're the ones paying these bills, and so let's take a look at the makeup of customers. Over 90% of the BWS's customers are single-family residential customers, and in total, they account for about 35% of the usage. And importantly, they don't pay what we call the cost of service, the amount of money that it takes to serve them. They pay a bit under that, about 95% of their cost of service. That difference is made up by the orange band, which is non-residential customers. While they're only about 5% of the number of accounts, they account for about 34% of the water usage, and they pay about 117% of their cost of service. Multi-unit residential is in the second line. They're about 4% of the number of accounts, about 21% of the total usage in the system, and they pay an even 100% of their cost of service. The additional amounts that are collected from non-residential customers is used to offset rates for single-family residential, agricultural, and non-potable, and recycled water customers. So what's being proposed for the next five-and-a-half-year period? As a series of increases begin in February 1, 2024, that would be a 10% increase, and then on July 1 of 2024, another 10%. And then on each July 1 thereafter, 9%, 8.5%, 8%, and 8%. And I think it's important to point out that all customer classes will have the same rate increase. So single-family residential rate increases will be the same as non-residential, although there's gonna be some variability in the tiers. And let me tell you what's meant by that. And this is really an effort to enhance affordability for those who are least able to pay. So the current rate structure for residential customers is based on tiers, meaning the more water you use, the more you pay for that tier of water. So the first tier is the first 2,000 gallons of water. It's called the essential needs tier. And about 10% of the board's single-family residential customers use 2,000 gallons per month or less of water. They pay the lowest rate, $4.46 per thousand. The next tier goes from 2,000 to 6,000 gallons per month. And about half of the customers use 6,000 gallons a month or less. That second tier is $5.25 per thousand. The third tier goes from 6,000 gallons to 30,000 gallons per month. It's charged at $5.85 per thousand. And then the highest tier, over 30,000 gallons per month. And only 3% of BWS's customers are using more than 30,000 gallons per month. This is a lot of water for a single-family residence, but it's charged at the highest rate, $9.25 per thousand. The multifamily residential tiers are similar. They're shifted a little bit lower to reflect the fact that there is not the same amount of outdoor irrigation in multifamily residential as there is in single-family. So that's why the tiers are a little bit lower. The overall cost of service is a little bit lower. That's why the rates in each tier are a little bit lower for multifamily residential also. Within what's being proposed for single, well, for all residential is to limit the increase in that first 2,000 gallons per month to 2.5% per year. Not the 10% number overall for the class, but 2.5% per year. Now, all residential customers get the benefit of this low-cost 2,000 gallons per month rate. And as I mentioned before, about 10% of residential customers are using 2,000 gallons per month or less. So how is that being paid for? Well, it's by shifting the increases to the higher usage tiers. And this shows the four tiers for single-family residential customers that I just went through. The existing rates are shown in the dark blue bars, and the proposed rates at the effective date of July 1, 2028 are shown in the orange. So you can see that disproportionately, the increases here are shifted to the highest water users, those using over 30,000 gallons per month. And again, only about 3% of BWS's single-family residential customers are using that amount of water. Similar information just presented in a different fashion. The yellow columns to the, to the left of the slide show the four tiers and the usage amounts in each tier. The current rates are shown in lavender, and the proposed rates are shown in blue. Now, let's talk about what that means in terms of a water bill, because ultimately, that's the amount that people pay, right? So the, this shows how to calculate your water bill. This information comes to every BWS customer on their water bill. So in this instance, we're looking at a sample bill, 8,510,000 gallons of usage, a single-family residential customer on a three-quarter inch meter. So the first thing that's done is to round down the usage to the nearest 1,000 gallons, or eight K-gals, 1,000 gallons. The first two, 2,000 gallons of that falls into the first tier. So it's charged at $4.46 per thousand, equaling $8.92. Then, this customer is using their entire allotment in tier two, so four K-gals are used in tier two, times $5.25 per thousand, that equals $21. And then they're using two increments of their allotment in tier three, so that's charged at $5.85 per thousand. You can see the extended amount being $11.70. There's also a monthly customer charge that every customer pays based on meter size. Single-family residential customers have the smallest meters. They pay the smallest amount. This is $12.09 currently, so this customer's water bill totals $53.71 for the month. I mentioned the monthly customer charge based on meter size, and that single-family residential customers have the smallest meters, and thus the lowest charge. They're shown in the top two rows there. Currently, that charge is $12.09. On February 1, 2024, it's proposed that would go up by 10% or to $13.30, and you can see the successive increases each July 1 thereafter. The charges for the other meter sizes are also shown. Um, customers with a twelve-inch meter might be a really large industrial operation or a large commercial center. Those meters are more expensive to repair, maintain, and replace, and that's why the charges go up as the meter size goes up. So let's compare some some bills. These are for single-family residential customers. This is an example of a low-water usage customer, a customer using two thousand gallons per month. They currently pay twenty one dollars and one cent per month. On February first, twenty twenty four, that would go up to twenty two dollars and forty four cents. And then on July first, twenty twenty four, to twenty four dollars. And then you can see the increases on each July first thereafter. The changes in terms of actual dollars are shown right below that. So that increase on February first, twenty twenty four would be a dollar and forty three cents. That's a change of six point eight percent. That's less than what I told you the overall incre- increase was for the class, right? Which te- was ten percent. That's reflective of keeping the increases in the essential needs tier down to two and a half percent per year. This is um, what we call the average water user. The average single-family residential bill is for nine thousand gallons of usage a month. That customer currently pays fifty nine dollars and fifty six cents. On February first, twenty twenty four, that would go up to sixty five dollars and twelve cents. You can see the increases thereafter. Um, you can see the dollar change down below that. So on February first, twenty twenty four, that would go up by five dollars and fifty six cents per month. That's a change of nine point three percent. Again, it's less than the ten percent. And that's reflective of all the residential customers getting the benefit of that lower cost, uh, those lower increases in the essential needs tier. This is a high-water user. This example is with thirty five thousand gallons per month of usage. This customer currently pays two hundred and, almost two hundred and thirty dollars a month for their water. That would go up uh, twenty eight dollars and twenty eight cents on February first, twenty twenty four, or about twelve point four percent. That's higher than the, for the class overall, because again, we've shifted the highest increases to the highest usage tier um, in for these residential customers. Taking a look at multi-unit residential water rates. Again, these rates are tiered. The tiers are shown in the yellow columns. The current rates are shown in lavender, and the proposed changes are shown in blue. Um, this is similar to the information that you've seen previously, but in that essential needs tier, they currently pay three dollars and seventy seven cents per thousand gallons. On February first, twenty twenty four, that would go up to three dollars and eighty six cents. You can see the proposed changes under each tier and by each year in this table. Let's take a look at some sample bills, focusing your attention to the the first row with the yellow. This is an example of a multi-unit residential uh, building that has two hundred and seventy-two dwelling units in it, served by a three-inch water meter. And their monthly usage for the building as a whole averages seven thousand gallons per dwelling unit. That water bill's currently eight thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. It would go up uh, ten percent uh, uh, roughly um, on February first, twenty twenty four, to ninety four hundred and sixty-two dollars. The increases each successive year are shown thereafter. Let's compare that to the bottom row. That's a symbol, similar number of dwelling units, but they're, maybe they have a lot of outdoor irrigation, or they're using water a lot less efficiently, but they have an eight-inch meter, and their average usage is fourteen thousand gallons per month. So twice as much in the, as in the previous example. This customer is currently paying nineteen thousand, eight hundred and five dollars per month. The increases each uh, for each of the proposed changes are shown right after that. So twenty two thousand, six hundred and ten, twenty five thousand, four hundred, and so on. Non-residential customers, um, as I mentioned, they pay uh, more than their cost of service, about a hundred and seventeen percent. Their rate is currently five dollars and twenty uh, seven cents per thousand gallons of usage. Um, these customers all pay the same rate per thousand gallons, regardless of how much they use. That's a reflection of the very big differences in the types of customers that fall into this this class, and also the reality that um, because a customer is using a large amount of water, it may be a reflection of their industry, rather than whether or not they're using water efficiently or not. So those are very difficult things to judge and to alloc- allocate equitably. And so it's very common for water utilities to charge a uniform rate in the nas- non-residential sector. That rate, as I said, is currently five dollars and twenty seven cents per thousand. On February first, twenty twenty four, it would go up by ten percent to five dollars and eighty cents. And then another ten percent to six dollars and thirty eight cents per thousand, and so on through the period. Let's take a look at a few example bills. Um, the first one is a restaurant. You might think about this as a uh, a fast food restaurant, maybe a McDonald's or something, served by an inch-and-a-half meter using two hundred and thirty thousand gallons of water per month. They currently pay one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars for that. That would go up by ten percent on February first to thirteen hundred and fifty-two dollars. You can see the increases in each year after. Let's go look at uh, uh, another example, a large industrial user, second from the bottom. Uh, eight-inch meter using thirty-one million gallons of water a month, right? Thirty-one thousand K-gals. They currently pay a hundred and, almost a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a month for that. That would go up by ten percent on February first to over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You can see the large shopping center example down at the very bottom, using just shy of five million gallons per month, and and the other examples as it works through there. Agricultural customers and recycled water customers currently pay less than their cost of service. They have reduced rates to encourage uh, usage there. Those reduced rates will be continued. This shows the tiered rates for agricultural customers. The first two tiers are identical to single-family residential, because many of these farms have a single family residence on them. The third tier is, the rate drops down to two dollars and twelve cents per thousand, with the idea that that's used for um, for crop irrigation, for supporting uh, on-island production of fresh produce. It's intended to keep uh, those rates reduced. So uh, the essential needs tier here are are exactly the same as for single-family residential customers. But pay, pay attention to tier three there. Currently, it's two dollars and twelve cents per thousand. That would go up to two dollars and thirty-three cents per thousand on February first, twenty twenty four. You can see the increases um, in in each period thereafter. In this example, here's a um, agricultural customer served by a one-inch meter using ninety-eight thousand gallons of water per month. They currently pay two hundred and forty dollars and twenty-four cents for that. For that, it would go up by nine point eight percent on February first to two dollars and sixty, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And then each of the increases are shown thereafter. As I mentioned, non-potable and recycled water customers, they pay lower rates um, to encourage their usage of this water. Um, they incur additional costs onsite to to implement its usage. And it uh, every um, every bit of non-potable and recycled water that these customers use saves the potable water for everybody else. So it's to everybody's benefit to to have this type of usage. There are also some existing fee waivers for affordable housing and homeless units. Um, those fees that are waived are the water system facilities charge and the um, water meter charge. Also, fire sprinkler retrofits, those, the uh, the water meter charge for those retrofits is waived. It's proposed to continue those waivers. Uh, this is the exact language. Um, it's consistent with what's in the current schedule of rates and charges. B W S is considering waivers of the water system facilities charge and the meter charge for new farmers, particularly new small farmers connecting to the system for the very first time on a three-quarter or one-inch meter. The water system facilities charge is a one-time fee that a customer pays for capacity in the water system, again, the very first time that they connect. Um, this has a number of provisions to sure, ensure that they are a viable farming entity. Uh, and um, here's the exact language that would show up in the scheduler rates and charges. There's also a fire meter standby charge. Very few customers pay for this. I think there's about five hundred customers in the entire system. This is for those who have um, automatic um, fire sprinklers, private fire protection systems, uh, wet stand pipes, those types of things. It's for readiness to serve, for the ability of that water to be there twenty-four, seven, whenever it's needed in the event of a fire. Customers are not charged for the usage to put out a fire, but rather this monthly fire meter standby charge. There are not any changes being proposed to the charge for emergency interconnections. There are not any changes being proposed to the water system facilities charge, which I just described earlier. And there are not any changes being proposed to the automatic adjustments that are available to the B W S either for power costs or environmental regulations compliance fees. And with that, I'll hand it back to the man- to the manager.
Uh, uh, thank you, Dave, uh, Dave Ebersold from C D M Smith, our rate consultant, uh, doing the rate study for us. Uh, this time, I'm going to turn it over to Kathleen Elliott Paihiniui, our uh, information officer, head of our communications office, to talk about water conservation and also uh, the feedback we got uh, from the numerous meetings we held around the island.
Thank you, manager, chair, board members. So uh, we have a low-income household water assistance program that we've been doing, and um, sadly, the mayor just left, but um, this came through the city and county of Honolulu, and we uh, used it to our full advantage during uh, COVID, and continue to use it to this day uh, to help with our customers. And uh, we will continue to work and enhance any kind of these low uh, income assistance programs that we can uh, identify. We have been accepting testimony through today. We have gotten some additional testimony, and uh, we uh, put this out early on so people knew how to reach us. We have different various methods where people could uh, contact us. We put up our website with all the information at towards the end of July. We had uh, nearly thirty-five hundred views, and we also did some social media that people clicked through on. We also did a web um, a video specific, basically the presentation you saw today. We did as a video on our website, thanks to uh, Wayne and Stella, who put that together. And as you can see, we had nearly three hundred people view it. We also held four public meetings throughout the island. And uh, those meetings, we had seventy-five views of those specific meetings on our website, and they also aired on Ollalo. And they are also currently available on Ollalo on demand. We uh, met with twenty-one neighborhood boards. Uh, this is just a representative sampling throughout the island, and about seven interest groups that we did specific uh, presentations to, as well as distributing information at various events. We also mailed our Water Matters, a special edition, to our hundred and seventy thousand account holders. And we received a hundred and seventeen written and oral co- comments, not including the neighborhood boards and community meetings. Of those a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and two were opposed or have concerns about the increases, and about fifteen supported the increases and felt they were necessary. We also received about a hundred and thirty questions at the neighborhood board meetings and other meetings. So the topics of concern kind of fell into these top six buckets. Red Hill, increases too high, cost of living, impact to our community, sewer, and then just a a general bucket of development planning and infrastructure. And here are just, I'm not going to read any of these, but these are just some quotes I pulled out from some of the comments that we had. Nothing that we haven't seen or heard, uh, you know, very un-understandable comments. Again, just as some quote quotes. And then some quotes from those who supported it. The last one, of course, being, you know, that why they supported it, they still uh, had concerns about, you know, the Navy uh, covering our costs. Uh, process actually started back in twenty twenty-two with the technical work that we do to support uh, and to understand our rates. And then today, uh, we have our public hearing. And then I will uh, turn this back to the manager. We briefed all the co- uh, council members. We did some interviews with media, and I will turn this back over to the manager. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Kathleen. I sort of went out of order a little bit here. Sorry about that, uh, but um, you know, one, one of the things that uh, we felt that the Kupuna were probably the mo- some of the most vulnerable in our population of customers, uh, fixed incomes, maybe one or two-person families uh, living in their homes. And uh, the Kupuna Water Conservation and Retrofit Program, where we would go uh, upon referral with their permission into their homes and conduct a water audit, to actually look at opportunities to find and uh, leaks in their toilets or other other plumbing, and also maybe help them with the uh, the rebates, and capitalize on the rebates to replace inefficient uh, water-using devices with more efficient water conservation devices. Uh, we did uh, uh, and it's required when you do these proposed water rates, which are actually uh, proposed administrative rules that would apply to our customers to go before the Small Business Regulatory Review Board, which we did back in August. And uh, after doing a very similar presentation to them, they did uh, recommend going to the public hearing process, which cul- culminates today in this very meeting. Uh, the rate adoption process, like uh, Kathleen pointed out earlier, it started actually back in January twenty twenty-two to do the evaluation of our future needs. Uh, with water rates, we have, we, the way we do it is uh, to develop projections of what our rates or our costs would be for the next five years, uh, five-year period. And from that projection, determine uh, how much revenue we would need to generate to fund both both our operation and maintenance uh, budgets for the next five years, but also our capital improvement program. What kind of infrastructure improvements we needed to do in the next five and a half years. Uh, so uh, we are here today, uh, November twenty twenty-three for uh, possibly of the board's action on this matter, if they so choose to, uh, with this proposal. Again, you know, this is uh, this is the uh, uh, rate increases uh, laid out over time from uh, February first of twenty twenty-four all the way to July first, twenty twenty-eight. But I wanted to talk a little bit about, I know the mayor and uh, greatly respect the mayor, and I appreciate him showing up today and and sharing his manao with the board and with the community, uh, his concerns. Uh, now, this is looking at the scenario, potentially holding off uh, any rate increases in the year twenty twenty-four. And I'm doing this uh, because I believe part of my job is to uh, also inform the board, so the board can make a good uh, informed decisions on critical matters like water rates. So under this scenario, we're looking at uh, proposal, this proposed scenario here, uh, no rate increases on February first of twenty twenty-four and July first of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and then going back to the scheduled rate increases starting on July first, uh, twenty to uh, twenty twenty-five, going all the way to July first, twenty twenty-eight. So we want to look at what is the impact uh, to revenue. Uh, so this is what we're looking at right now, uh, the um, the ending uh, end-of-year fund balance that we would look at uh, given, holding our our projections on what our future operating budgets or operating costs would be over this period of time, and also uh, uh, implementing the C I P as we had proposed to the board earlier in that uh, other graphic. Uh, so you can see that uh, uh, what happens, we we quickly get into uh, uh, decreases or deficits there uh, in our ending fund, ending balance at the close of each fiscal year. Uh, this is just to compare our proposed water rates, and this is as of the February first increase. Oh, you can see it's really tiny there, but that little blue bar in the sort of the middle or uh, bottom one, one-third of this graph is the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Uh, below us is Maui County and Kauai County. Uh, and uh, looks like the most expensive water rates. This is for using uh, nine thousand gallons a month. But it's actually the city of San Francisco. So for Board of Water Supply, just to put everything in perspective, you know, what we, what we're talking about is actually rate increases that affect how much we sell a thousand gallons of water. Uh, so the proposal is, what is the water rate per thousand gallons in addition to the customer charge, which is a smaller fixed charge uh, each month? So just put everything kind of in perspective compared to if somebody had to go out and purchase a thousand gallons of bottled water. And that's all I had to share, and uh, thank you, uh, board, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Ernie. Members, any questions? Maybe, maybe just um, but either i- either Ernie or or Dave, who would start with Ernie?
Okay.
Um, maybe you can just talk a little bit about the process and how we came to this this specific structure. I know that in early meetings, there were more discussions of all different kinds of structures. I know that in early meetings, there were more discussions of all different kinds of structures. But what, what was the process to get to this?
Uh, so the process was actually to kind of look at our costs of providing the service and uh, come up with projections on our operating budget, operating costs and our future capital improvement program. And we did, I think, uh, I think it was Dave or Kathleen pointed out that we, we even looked at scrubbing our CIP in the future to try to look at doing only what we felt was necessary. Because remember back in twenty eighteen, I think one of the things that we were trying to target was replacing up to twenty-one miles of pipelines each year in our system, which is about one percent of the two thousand one hundred miles of pipeline. Kind of setting that as a, a, uh, a target to hit. Um, but we felt that given the circumstances and challenges that we face right now, especially in the area of developing new water sources of, for our community, that we had to temporarily suspend the effort to get to one percent of our pipeline replacement each year. If we had to do that, in addition to developing new water sources, the CIP would have been even larger and the proposed water rates would have been even higher. We felt that that was not really something that our community could afford. With this rate proposal, I can tell you, I really struggled with this. Um, uh, because you know, it's a, it's a balancing between providing safe, dependable water for our community with keeping rates affordable for our community. Uh, and yet we provide a critical service to our, to everyone to, to survive on this island and to keep our economy going. Uh, Dave, you want to add anything?
Yeah, just, I think another important element that was given a lot of consideration. The manager talked about the capital program. Another was the days of working capital. And this is an important financial policy that the board has. Um, the, the financial policy as written is to maintain never less than sixty days working capital with a target of a hundred and eighty. This is money that can be used to respond to, um, say, a direct hit from a hurricane. Um, things like rate stabilization due to, due to the global pandemic and inflation and things like that. So the working capital has been put to work over the past couple, three years. It's done what it's supposed to do, but during that time it's dropped down. It's not at a hundred and eighty days. And so rebuilding that working capital takes additional revenue that comes from water rates to rebuild it. So a lot of consideration was given towards how, how much and how fast should that be rebuilt? I can say that um, your stakeholder advisory group felt very uncomfortable ever dropping below sixty days. I think in one early scenario, we showed a number um, of letting it drop down to as low as nine days. And um, that, that didn't go over well with them. But for some very fundamental reasons, for example, that doesn't even cover a month of employee salaries. So if there's a disaster and you can't collect revenue, how do you pay your employees? So it's very fundamental. In the scenario that's been put before you for consideration today, it never drops below forty-five days and that was guidance given by the permitted interaction group. The other guidepost in that was to um, not have the increases go over ten percent at any given time. And so we've gone through numerous iterations to put together a proposal that stays within those boundaries.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if not, uh, we're going to move on to um.
Do I have a question here, if I may?
Yes, sir.
May we get an indication as to how many members of the public that are present here who are in fact ratepayers? Let me get an indication of that.
Wait, are ratepayers?
Uh huh.
They're for ratepayers.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dan at the outside.
I'm sorry.
Dan at the outside.
Dan.
That's it. Fourteen? I got it. It's okay.
Okay.
We, we, we need to argue about that.
Yeah, thank you, Chair.
Sorry, thank you.
Any questions?
Any other questions? We'll turn it over to uh, testimony. Madam Secretary, do we have any written testimony today?
Yes, Chair, and we have three.
That's my count. Thank you. Let the record reflect that we have three pieces of written testimony. Um, Ms. Kawaii, do we have any in-person testimony waiting today?
Yes, Chair, we have one in-person testimony.
Okay. Dr. Anthony, you're up.
I'm still waiting counsel to arrive. May I just spy at the tail end of the street?
Your counsel?
Yes.
Oh, okay. You, you may, uh, you may testify later as you wish.
Yeah, at the tail end of the street. So one, two, I'll be three.
Okay. And then we have um, Kim, we have?
One remote.
One remote? Oh, wait, can you let them in?
Uh, no.
Yes, Chair, we have one remote testifier. Her name is Natalie Iwasa. Um, so I've just admitted her. And if she'll turn on her microphone and please wait to be recognized by the Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Natalie Iwasa. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Anthony, members of the board. Um, I did submit written testimony, but it was late. So I just wanted to um, make a few comments. Um, I would ask you to change the rates on the single-family homes in the zero to two thousand gallon. That was been, has been termed essential needs. And I think that that rate tier should be the same regardless of the user. Um, obviously, water is our most important resource. We need to make sure that it's reliable and sustainable. And I am a bit concerned about the deferred maintenance. Um, you know, if this goes on long-term, it could end up costing more in the long run. So I do fully understand the need for increased rates. Um, you know, if you do not change the lower tier for the single-family home, what ends up happening is that spread between the single-family multi-unit in that tier continues to grow over the years. And I just feel that that's not fair, not equitable. Um, we did hear, however, that the single-family homes are only covering about ninety-five percent of the cost that it, um, that is incurred to service those users. And I ask you to take a look at that. Um, I understand they're subsidized by non-residential users who I, like, the biggest one that comes to my mind is city government, but I'm not sure if that's included in that or not. Um, I also wanted to mention that, you know, some of us are really cognizant of our water usage and really appreciate the, um, the water barrel presentation that was put up. I think it was on the website not too long ago. And so that's another reason for keeping the lower tiers at a lower rate because we are aware of how much we're using and trying to keep that amount low. And then just one other comment, if I may. Um, I ask that our bills not be less than twenty-eight days per cycle. And the reason I mention this is because, um, and this was a while ago. It hasn't happened since, but one time we were billed for twenty-seven days in one cycle and then thirty the next. And that put us in a, a low bracket for the twenty-seven days. But then the, the um, thirty-three days was way over in, up above six thousand. And it just kind of threw things off. So just a comment on that. And Ernie Lau, I love what you guys are doing there. I, I just fully appreciate Ernie as head of our Board of Water Supply. So thank you for letting me testify and um, look forward to your decision.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, Natalie. Appreciate it. Any, any comments? Thank you so much for your time today.
Um. Chair, was there another remote testifier represented here?
I think so. So this split differently. Um, he's actually in the bucket of the adoption of the resolution and not in the, in the
Public hearing.
Public hearing. And Dr. Jim, I'm wondering if you want to go there too, so you have a little more time, which is the adoption of the resolution, which comes in maybe another ten minutes. That's okay.
Okay, you meant, you're suggesting that I should just take the number two slot?
Yeah, well, if you want to wait for counsel, I can, I can call on you.
No.
Okay.
No.
No. Um, Chair recognizes uh.
One, one doesn't wait for counsel any more than one waits for the second coming of the Lord.
Before you get started, um, upon counsel's request, they asked me to both acknowledge that Dr. Jim is my father. Um, and in addition, being my father, um, everything that he says is his opinion and his own personal opinion and that he does not speak for, for Chair on this particular issue, of which he's going to.
I concur with that, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The fire should go. Okay. Um. For the record, I'm Dr. Jim Anthony and uh, I am a ratepayer. And my wife Grace actually does the bill paying. And so she is also here and may want to testify. That said, as personal introduction, I would like to tell the board, because I am in fact only addressing the board. And by courtesy arrangement, you come from the second arm of the BWS total administrative structure. That is, you are administration, you're head of administration. This is a formally constituted meeting of the board, five members plus two ex officio members. Okay? Um. I would like to remind the board particularly and other members of the public who are here, by reason of the configuration of this arrangement, I apologize for having my back turned to those of you who have my back. Very unapologetic. I'd like to remind you that we live, all of us who are here, on a six-hundred-square-mile island. Small. In one sense, those who live here, particularly in times of crisis, and this may in fact, as we look back on this day, view this as a time of crisis for water, portable water, the stuff that we drink. At a time like this, we are one family, one ohana. That is a principal mechanism that we use to survive. Red Hill, for example, threatens that survival in a major way. I am not comfortable with the amount of information that I have on Red Hill, but I am not comfortable with a lot of the information that I have with respect to the proposal that is before this board to raise rates in the way that it has set out. And as you have seen, two members of the administration, three members of the administration, explained this afternoon. Uh, let me stop there. In many ways, the administration at the behest of this relatively new board has adopted certain, at least taints of Hawaiian customary tradition. Mr. Lau, your title, for example, is now available in Hawaiian. So in that spirit, when I come before the board today, I have not come empty-handed. We who are islanders do not come to an occasion like this. And what is this occasion? You, the board, have invited us as members of the public to come and visit you on your home ground according to your rules. We accept that. This is your home. There is an indecent aspect to your invitation, if you don't mind my saying so. We are likely, but I hope not assuredly invited here only for two minutes. So on that note, not having come here open-handed, this is a small hole cook. Not to the board, but to you. We didn't cook it with the policy, but we offered to you on a note of our good intentions, if you will allow us to speak. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now that said, I note, especially for the record, that this is not a decision-making meeting of the board. This is an information eliciting meeting of the board. As far as I know, no decisions are being made today. And this board has not been noticed for purposes of decision-making. Decision-making will take some time in the future, whenever that might be. On the ninth of May of this year, just six months ago, Mr. Lau, the governor of the state, the mayor, the president of the University of Hawaii, and a number of other senior officials of our state and county government issued what they called ungrammatically, a unified statement. In that statement, what they did is what I would like to do before this board this, this afternoon. Fundamentally, and this is in the testimony that I have already presented in written form in two sections, what these leaders of the community, including Mr. Lau, and by the way, of importance, is the fact that no member of the board signed that statement. But what they asked for was two things, in a sense, very simple. Actually, three things. First of all, they were asking for simplicity of communication. Secondly, that unified statement asked for total transparency. That was not defined in any way. But that unified statement asked for total transparency with respect to the Red Hill matter. And then there was this statement, and I quote, "We'd like to have data in more straightforward-presented manner so that we can understand it as one society, one ohana." Their words, not mine. "We want to have a clear and comprehensive plan, clear and comprehensive." I listened as carefully as I might from that front chair today to Mr. Lau and two of his colleagues, the last of which, whom are still here, is still here. And I have read the documents that you have circulated. And that, I did not come here unprepared. That would be disrespectful. I am an soon-to-be ninety-year-old Kupuna. My brain still works. I can't pound sixteen-penny nails anymore on the top of a roof. But my brain still works, I think, to some extent. I have pored through the documents that you folks have submitted to us. I'm not better than any one of you, but I am different. I have been an unashamed activist since I was twenty-six years old. I come, I come from what is called a poor class. My father was a carpenter, often unemployed. We did not pay our water bills and we had our water bills cut off. I moved from one stage in another Pacific island to an even smaller stage here. Not only smaller stage, but in some ways more corrupt. But this is my whole, my home community now and I can't talk stink too much, just a little bit. So he by any kind of honest. genuine, heart to heart exchange situation, if we were not on that camera or that one or the stenographer's, if we were in a different setting and we were being honest with each other. These documents and these pictures that were shown by two members of Mr. Lau's staff do not meet the standards that were set out in the May ninth unified statement made by Mr. Lau and the senior members of our government. I ask you to consider that. And for this reason, but not only for this reason, there are other reasons canvassed in my six pages of testimony in two parts, seven pages altogether, why I think that the board should step back after hearing, and there's a way to do this within Sunshine, after listening to reasoned arguments that can only be presented in a setting that is not as formal as this, that the board, my request is within as, not more than the two minutes that I have, not much more, that the board should stop and think about what it is proposed to do, what it is about to do. And my suggestion is, so that you have some kind of suggestion to work with, is that you should slow the speed at which you are going forward, conditionally only approve this for no more than a couple of years. And in the meantime, submit a formal request to the administration, the board after the administration. Let me be clear about the board and the administration, and the press has been delinquent in addressing this very fundamental issue. That what has happened to the Board of Supply since it was established in April nineteen twenty nine is that power has shipped. It was never invested in the board, even though the board was established to take politics out of water. You cannot take politics out of water. Water is fundamentally American. Whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting politically. That's an old tradition in water history. So let me get back to the board for one minute and its relationship to the administration. Power has remarkably shifted from the board to the administration. The administration is in the saddle. The board has no independent source of information in order to do its own forensic auditing of what the board, what the administration generate. That is a fundamental problem in this whole business that is before us. There is an internal struggle going on based on my observations from the outside. It is quiet. It is carefully modulated. And I suspect that Professor Sprott has a singular role in redressing a balance that is not, that will be more in the public interest than the current relationship between the board and the administration. You know what has happened? Mr. Lau, I hope you don't mind. You and your staff now have, at someone's suggestion and intervention, you all have Hawaiian names to your titles, right? To your official titles. Okay? So may I use this analogy? There are things that Hawaiians call ilio, word for dog. Yeah? You know what has happened with the relationship between the board and the administration? The board has become the tail and the administration has become the dog. And they're trying to redress that balance. And that is a fundamentally political matter. I spent ten years of my life trying to be a political scientist. I know a little bit about this. This is about power. I think the board should take a closer look at this. It should invite considered, carefully modulated evidence from members of the community who can speak to this issue. And not necessarily in this format. The best ways that people on an island communicate with each other is not in these surroundings. This is not where we engage each other in what's called productive exchange of information.
Dr. Anthony, we're fifteen minutes in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a unique occasion too, where a son tells his father what to do. That's okay, can handle. No problem. Duty comes before family responsibility. Thank you.
Yes.
Three minutes. So I ask the board to slow down. I ask the board to convene settings where we can kuka kuka, one to one, smaller scale, slow down. Marai rules. Marai rules for exchange. If you get bored with what I'm saying, roll your mat out, fall asleep and snore, I'll get the message. Marai rules, Maori rules. Hawaii can borrow from that. Mr. Chairman, your three minutes is overly generous. I leave myself open to questions. If any of you have questions or dare to pose questions, I'd be delighted to try and answer them. But with respect to providing rebuttal evidence for the record, I will send that in later. This is neither the time nor the place for me to do that, but I will do so in writing at another time. Kapua, I'm pleased that you're here to hear this. You honor me and I thank you for your patience and the patience of your colleagues and you, Mr. Lau. Thank you.
Thank you for the call.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Anthony.
Okay.
It's clear that I should have went to either Law.
No questions?
I think Ernie just had one.
Oh, yeah.
Um, about decision making today, just for clarity, just so you know what the stakes are for it. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, actually, Dr. Anthony, uh, so the public hearing, after the public hearing closes on the agenda, there's actually items requiring board action.
I'm sorry?
After the public hearing closes, there's actually items requiring board action. And one of the actions is if the board so chooses is the potential adoption of the water rate proposal.
Potential what?
Adoption of the water rate proposal if the board chooses to do that.
When?
Uh, it'll be when the regular meeting convenes.
Oh, okay.
After the.
Yeah, yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that intervention, Akul. Okay? Am I released?
Yes, you are.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, any other testimony that's just come in?
No, Chair, no. I think testimony has come in on this item.
Okay. Is, I had heard a rumor that Rep. Kila was waiting. Is he gonna wait for item two in the in the agenda? You mean, not if we can't? Yeah.
Aloha, Chair. I'm admitting Miss Representative Kiva in for testimony.
Aloha, board members, Chair, Vice Chair and respected members of the Board of Water Supply Commission. Uh, my name is State Representative Darius Kila, House District forty four. First and foremost, I'd just like to thank BWS for taking the time to host a virtual town hall with my community and myself. We had about twenty folks in attendance and it was great, I think, to break down the purpose of the rate increases, but ultimately what it came down to is to the fact that all of these are in response to what has happened at Kapu Kaki at Red Hill. And it is for that reason alone that I must come out in opposition against the proposed rate increases. As we talked and you folks mentioned prior, some of the hardest folks that will be hit are native Hawaiians, are the folks living paycheck to paycheck, are the folks on fixed income, where they're balancing every single penny to go by as far as it can. I know you folks have the tough job right now to vote on this proposed rate increase, and I understand wholeheartedly what the money is going towards, but personally, and knowing what is at stake, I humbly ask for the reconsideration. It's funny, as we talked, as I'm listening to you folks, how the lowland folks have to pump water to the highland folks. My community lives along the shoreline. They live in these lowlying communities. And thus, they are paying for the water to go to the places of communities that they don't have access to and that these homes can't afford a high rate increase, can't afford the money to go up for their water bill, but my community cannot. I think the mayor talked about also the assistance that has gone out, but as of right now, there currently is no assistance. So the city still has to build out some of these programs, and I understand that it is delayed to potentially January, February. But as cost of living increases and everything goes up as well, I personally could not publicly take the stance to oppose the rate increase, and I understand again what position you folks are in. Before my community of House District forty four, I humbly oppose the proposed rate increases being Board of Water Supply Commission meeting. I thank you folks again for the work that you do and the work to do and, um, mahalo.
Thank you, Rapila. We appreciate your time today. Uh, Madam Secretary, anyone else to testify on on this matter?
No, Chair, there's no other testifiers.
Uh, Chair, if I could just also to acknowledge that we did receive written testimony from Melody, Melody Aduhua and Alan Verdic from the Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. And I think they oppose the rate increase.
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to take.
So noted and we'll add those into the record as well. Thank you very much. Um, if there are no further questions or testimony in closing the public hearing, we are now in regular meeting. Uh, we had two items on our action agenda today. Um, item number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on October twenty third, twenty twenty three. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, can I get a roll call vote, please? Oh, sorry. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve, so moved. Any second?
Second.
Okay, let the record reflect that it has been moved by, um, sorry, Ed. By, I was gonna say Chair Ed. By Ed and seconded by John. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair Kapua Spro.
Aye.
Board Member Brian Ntaya.
Aye.
Board Member Jonathan Conchero.
Aye.
Board Member Edward Sniffin.
Aye.
Board Member Jean Hawano.
Aye, Epstein.
And Chair Nali Guetbe.
Aye.
Chair both in passes with five eyes and one vision.
Thank you, So No. So thank you so much. Please note for the record. Uh, moving on to action item number two, adoption of resolution nine seventy six, twenty twenty three, adopting the revisions of the schedule of rates and charges for the furnishing of water and water service for fiscal years twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine, effective from and after February first and to remain in effect until superseded. Chair recognizes Ernie Lau.
Uh, thank you, Chair, and we, during the public hearing that was held just before this regular meeting, there was extensive presentation on the rate proposal before the board. Uh, we are recommending adoption of resolution nine seven six, uh, to twenty twenty three of relating to the schedule of rates and charges for furnishing water and water service for fiscal years twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine, effective February first, uh, twenty twenty four, to remain in effect until superseded. Um, in summary, the proposed rates and charges, as reflected in the proposed schedules, updates the monthly customer charge and quantity charge for all customer classes, proposes waiving the installation fee and water systems facilities charge for new farmers to support food sustainability. Uh, and, um, you know, the resolution is attached to our report.
Uh, Madam Secretary, is there any testimony?
There was one, but he came in and did his, Darius.
Anyone else?
No, Chair, no other.
Written or in person? Thank you so much. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Ed. Any second?
Again.
Seconded by John. Any discussion?
Question for Mayor Lau.
Yes.
Can you remind you of the, the public outreach for this?
Okay. Uh, so public outreach, we conducted four community town hall meetings. Uh, actually, I'm gonna ask Kathleen to, to share the details of the community outreach.
Uh, four public meetings that we held around the island, unfortunately not as well attended as we would have liked, but about twenty five people. We did, uh, twenty one neighborhood boards that reached about four hundred and fifty people that would be both in person and most of those boards are hybrid. And then we, of course, sent out the Water Matters, a special edition to our account holders. Uh, that's about a hundred and seventy thousand accounts. And then we had articles both in the Star Advertising, including this morning, I might add. And, uh, Sybilby did an extensive article a couple of months ago. So we are on par with what we did five and a half years ago. We try to match, if not exceed as much as possible, what we did last time, using that as our standard. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. No more question.
Yeah.
Can you remind me again? So, um, there was a slide that talked about delaying implementation of the addition of the increased rates by one year. And it showed.
The ending fund balance going negative.
Focus to that slide.
Okay, sure. Okay, so this is, uh, right now in yellow, this is, you know, where we are uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty four. The ending fund balance is about fifteen million dollars. Um, and that's about twenty six days of working capital fund. Again, it takes, uh, is it Rayo? Come on up. Is it about? I get them, four hundred thousand, four hundred fifty thousand per day to operate the Board of Water Supply, putting the water system islandwide. Uh, so right now with that fifteen million dollars, it's about twenty six days. And this working capital fund, uh, this is like a emergency fund uh, for natural disasters like a hurricane, or if we had a wildland fire that impacted us, you know, we uh, we would dip into the working capital fund to help with the response and recovery efforts. Uh, so we, I know we weighed early on the, during the discussions with our stakeholder advisory group about lowering that working capital fund, which is by board policy to be set between sixty and a hundred eighty days. Uh, and we actually wanted to go even lower. Um, at one point, we had a scenario with only nine days working capital, which is really uh, would not be able to operate our water system that way. We anticipate if there's a major disaster, that especially one that affected a good part of this island, we'd have to probably suspend billing our customers because they would not be in a shape to receive mail or have houses that are still standing or not heavily damaged or destroyed. So we'd have to suspend billing for a while. Uh, so it's, this working capital fund would help tide us over until we can actually re-suspend, uh, reinstate billing and be able to bring in revenue to pay for the operation of the water system islandwide. Uh, so it's kind of this balance of how low do we take that, this working capital fund? And what kind of risk we wanna, um, experience, um, should we get into a very large Should we get into a very large disaster situation, but. Ray, maybe you can explain because I'll probably mess this up, what the red bars are on this ending fund balance.
Sure, so the um, orange bar first, I guess we'll start with. That is a percent rate increases. So if we do not implement a rate increase on February first, twenty twenty-first, or July first, twenty twenty-four. Um, that means we keep the rates in place that became effective on July first, twenty twenty-three at this point. So no increases from there. Um, this is what happens with the expenditures as projected. Um, just keeping that revenue flat, we would be eating into what we call that working capital. We would end this year at June thirtieth with approximately fifteen million dollars unreserved, unencumbered. Um, money, our working capital. And then by next year though, what you're seeing here is at least thirty-seven. Almost thirty-eight million dollars would need to be cut from the fiscal year twenty-four or twenty-five. Um, budgets. That would just bring us to zero dollars, spend every penny we brought in. Plus anything we had in the bank, that would just bring us to zero. So the cuts would have to be far deeper than the thirty-seven million and each year. It gets progressively harder without, if we just start rate increases on July first, twenty twenty-five. Um, we snap to nine percent increase from there. That is, you're looking at what needs to be cut, reduced from the capital improvement program budget, reduced from the operations and maintenance. Um, of the border water supply year over year through this rate cycle.
So, as, as we go forward on the first year, as we get different to the red, we'd be cutting two, two months of the program then?
The about thirty-seven, yeah, I mean, yep, you could generalize it like that, about seven, sixty to seventy days. Of operations need to be cut back, um.
It would come out of the operating budget and also our capital improvement program budgets.
It, it kind of speak into the capital improvement program budget. I saw on the, on this, on our slides, it was, it includes about forty-one miles of. Can you speak to, um, if we cut back on that, if we don't replace those, those prices? What, what kind of impacts would, would we see on the system, um, service and on impacts to the public?
Uh, we'd probably see continued increases in a number of main breaks around the island. Uh, you know, we're not, that's far from getting to the one percent a year, twenty-one miles a year. Uh, but our pipelines would continue to experience more main breaks and get, uh, with age and corrosion. Corrosion is probably one of the biggest factors affecting, most of our water system is metallic pipe. Uh, we've used a lot of PVC recently, but we've had a lot of terrible problems with plastic pipe. So, what, trying to find the slide here. So the impact would be that, you know, we probably see a continued increase in, in main breaks. Uh, and we, that would go on for a number of years. Forty-one miles, you know, we're starting to focus now on looking at our larger transmission mains, our bigger pipes in the system. Uh, like the forty-two inch main through parts of Pono Luthus.
I'm sorry, I should have ruled on the slide.
Uh, no, no, it's okay. I, I, I. I appreciate everybody's patience, just kind of doing it to you, slide by slide, but this is the, the mix, so. You're talking about four hundred twenty-five million that would be used for a pipeline or a renewal and replacement.
Okay.
So if we actually go into these cuts, uh, and if, say, just the board decided to not. Have any of the twenty calendar year twenty twenty-four increases, that's two, two rate increases. Uh, we would have to really prioritize what's important here. Um, so, I would say I would start to prioritize sources higher than pipeline replacements. The reason is if we don't have enough source capacity, water to take from underground aquifers and put into our system. Uh, then, you know, then that's gonna be a problem for our community. Uh, but pipes, you know, we have become much more efficient at repairing main breaks, although. The Mokapu Boulevard twenty-four inch main break took about. For almost four days to do the repair, so uh, community would have to just, you know. Live with greater inconvenience and with maybe some customers being without water for days at a time.
Appreciate. So just looking at this replacement schedule, it's about third of what you normally would have looked at. Okay.
Thank you. And we're looking at a total, almost one point two six billion dollars in metrics.
Um, maybe for Ray, you know, I, I was in some of the conversations about looking at like what costs started to look like. With respect to like overtime and I think Mokapu Boulevard, uh, which happened just a few days after that conversation. Um, is, is really an important piece of the puzzle when we're talking about the speed at which these crews have to work. To repair service, not only is it gonna disrupt water and in the case of a twenty-four inch main, there's. You know, maybe affects people in service, but it also affects the road, right? I got more than. One phone call asking about when we're gonna return to service and, you know, what happens? Or can you speak to um, this idea of, of this being critical infrastructure and also just. Talk a little bit about how it's in everybody's interest to turn these, uh, these brakes as quickly as possible.
Sure, so. So yes, um, we're looking at the slide where potentially I need to work with our divisions, um, to cut maybe. Equivalent of like sixty to seventy days of what it costs us to operate this place. But we can't actually turn the water off here for sixty or seventy days every year just to make those costs. So we would have to trim, like you're saying, all of our operating costs. So whether that means we need to restrict, um, the supplies available, the time we allow for overtime. But manager would never allow a public health and safety kind of crisis. We need to address things that are threatening public health, but. It would become a lot more difficult to balance that. Um. This is a twenty-four, seven, um, three hundred sixty-five days a year operation. Uh, we need to operate that way. That is what our customers expect us to do. Over the last five years, we've trimmed the operating budget significantly, I'd say, to be able to hold the budget flat. In the face of the kind of inflation we've been seeing over the last couple of years. I think that's already a testament to us getting as lean as we can possibly be, um, without, I mean, we can't. Cut down or, I mean, sorry, I, I don't want to sound like too like. Not that we can't, but it's just, it's tight. We've cut at least ten, fifteen percent every year. Just to keep within the rates that we're bringing in through the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three, um, rate setting period.
The other factor too, if we, if the board, and it's the purview of the board, not the administration to make a decision on water rates. Uh, but if the board were to decide to defer the rating proposals for twenty twenty-four. Uh, it doesn't mean that the need for those rate increases for the different revenue goes away. It just now gets kind of kicked down the road at some point in the future. Where, where we try to catch up to that, then the rate increases potentially might have to be even higher. Uh, greater than the ten percent. Uh, one, one thing too is, you know, like another, another thing that would happen of, probably have to look at, you know. I mentioned earlier that we have about two hundred vacancies in our workforce right now. Uh, I, I'd have to look at prioritizing how we fill those, maybe even temporarily spending filling those. Uh, so as not to incur more costs of operations, while we don't have the revenue coming in to. Be able to operate the island-wide water system for our community and be able to make the improvements we need. Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Good book.
Uh, less a question, but more a comment, Chair. I just really wanted to mahalo our staff and our leadership here at the board for tightening our collective belt and for keeping us lean. And really helping to keep the doors open and enabling us to keep our rates steady for the past several years. Because this is something that we've been facing for a long time and so I really appreciate. That means people, you know, have done everything they can and I'm not sure what more we can do in order to keep the water flowing. I really also want to mahalo on the Chair and Board Member Sniffin for highlighting the financial consequences. Of not passing these new rates, as well as the impacts to our community members of increased pipe and main breaks. Um, I also want to recognize all of those who came out today to testify, both in writing and in person, including Dr. Anthony, Rep Kila, Miziwasa. Environmental Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. I want to assure folks that this is a decision that's being voted on today. But one that we have been in dialogue and, you know, taking very, very seriously for a long time now. This is an incredibly difficult decision, but one that I feel like, um, we have to make at this time. And I also want to assure folks that we take Red Hill and the poisoning of our water supply incredibly seriously. And are committed to pursuing full reimbursement for any expenses made out, while also ensuring that we can continue to provide. Safe, independent drinking water to the future. I hope that the feds are gonna come through for us, but we can't just wait. In the meantime, we need to ensure that we can continue to provide folks with water. So, um, I just wanted to, to share that with folks and explain why at least I'm gonna be voting in support of the rate increase. Mahalo.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Madam Secretary, um, roll, roll call vote please.
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair Kapo Aspro.
Aye.
Board member Brian and Daya.
Aye.
Board member Jonathan Conchero.
Aye.
Board member Edwin Sniffin.
Aye.
Board member Jean Hopano.
I will have to respectfully abstain given my short tenure as a board member.
Thank you. Chair Nali Huapi.
Aye.
Chair motion passes with five ayes and one extension.
Thank you, please note for the record. Okay, moving on to information items. Uh, number one, update on the Board of Water Supply's response and potential impacts. For the Red Hill fuel contamination. Chair recognizes Joyce Lynn.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board members. Um, this is your November twenty twenty-three Red Hill update. Defueling of the Red Hill Bookville Storage Facility began last month, October sixteen. And the Joint Task Force Red Hill actually attended the board, um, our board meeting last month to provide us a brief update on their. Start of defueling. And since then, representatives of the Board for Water Supply have attended a series of Red Hill meetings. Um, such as the Field Tank Advisory Committee meeting and the Community Representation, um, Representation Initiative Group meeting. To um, gather additional updates for you on defueling. So originally, um, defueling started October sixteen and was predicted to complete January nineteen, twenty twenty-four. Um, however, as of November seventeen, defueling of the main tank has completed. Which means that they have de-fueled ninety-nine point five percent of the one hundred and four million gallons of fuel. That were in the fourteen tanks. As of right now, they are going to transition into removing the. Fuel that's at the tank bottom dome, um, shortly in December, early December, anticipating December eighth, actually. And also on November fourteen. A updated defueling supplement Plan Three was published. And it provided a few, um, additional details and updates. First and foremost, they announced the establishment of the Navy Closure Tank Force Red Hill. Which is the successor of the Joint Task Force Red Hill, who were, um, who are going to be responsible for the closure of the fuel tanks. As you can see there, there's been some updates regarding the defueling of the tanks as well. Here is the proposed transition timeline, um, from the Joint Task Force Red Hill. To the Navy's Closure Task Force Red Hill. So right now, they are in what's, um, high. On the far left side, it's Phase Five A, or actually they just finished that portion where they removed the fuel from the tank. Um, they are transitioning into right about here right now at this blue line. They are planning to start that December eight, where, um, they will remove the. Uh, remaining liquid fuel that's on the tank bottoms. And at the same time, that's when, um, the Navy Closure Task Force is, um, being introduced to this whole procedure. So they're getting updates and being able to transition fully to the Navy Closure Task Force. Um, anticipating somewhere around March. And with closure, um, as mentioned, um, it will be led by, um, the Navy Closure Task Force Red Hill. By Rear Admiral Stephen Barnett. So the first part of the closure plan that we know of right now is that they're gonna remove the remaining. Four thousand gallons of fuel and about twenty-eight thousand gallons of sledge. Um, using demolition contract where they're gonna take down the pipelines. It said that there's gonna be a closure plan update as well, early next spring. So we'll see what that plan would provide in terms of additional information. The non-fuel reuse survey that was conducted by Nakapuna Companies were released. However, the report was a little inconclusive. There weren't any specific options that was impointed. It was told that there's actually going to be a report due to Congress in February twenty twenty-four. So we anticipate a selection at that time. We'll provide more updates as we receive that. And this is just the ta, uh, Navy Closure Task Force structure. Um, similar to what the Joint Task Force had. And during the, uh, Field Tank Advisory Committee meeting, they, it was mentioned that they will be providing an updated version of this. Um, structure, organization, structure chart for us, um, with additional names of the individuals. And well, um, upcoming events in December, we have our regular Red Hill remediation roundtable. And following in January of next year, we have our quarterly meeting with the three admirals. And this concludes my update for this month. I'll be on standby for any questions.
So much. Members, any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, okay, folks, we're on a little bit of a tight schedule today, um, because we're gonna lose quorum in as soon as. Forty minutes from now. So I'm gonna deviate from today's. Uh, today's agenda and I'm gonna, um, close the. Um, I'm gonna suspend these items for information and I'm gonna go into executive session. So we can take on a couple of tasks and then after that, we'll come back to the rest of the updates. Um, before doing that though, I do wanna honor everyone who has, um. Signed up and been so patient for, um, testimony today. So, uh, Madam Chair.
Okay.
No, no, we're gonna get through it. Um, Madam Chair, uh, do we have any, uh, written testimony?
We have no written testimony.
Okay.
We have one remote and one in person.
Okay, so we're gonna take Susan first.
Material that was just presented. You get this to me now.
If you don't, many hands.
Oh, oh, here.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Hello, long tag no C. My update on Red Hill, okay? So we've all seen that before, that's our water system. And so I've been messing around with their, uh, Safe Waters website.
Yeah.
And here, from January first, twenty-three till October, that's their last date in there. Twenty-three, these exceedances right here are on TPHD and TPHO. They're exceedances, they're not detections, okay? Over here. These are all exceedances, so it shows all the chemicals or analytes that exceeded. And that's from May second to October twentieth. And then these are the particular wells, which I also put there. Those are the wells that this information encompassed. The next part of this is that in October, the Navy started getting a lot of com. Uh, complaints. And of course, they never know what the complaint is because they look at one complaint at a time. So I decided, well, what if we look at the detections? And see where they cluster. So the detections are below two hundred, because that's the number that they were using. However, you can see here, the clusters in these different zones, these are the zones. That have the cluster of people that were getting sick. And you, you can see here. Unfortunately, I cannot convince them to look at data the way maybe it ought to be. Because the Department of Health holds two hundred. Holds two hundred in this particular. Uh on the Joint Base Pearl Harbor Safe Waters website as their EAL, okay? So they look at one at a time. And I'm like, okay, well, these customer complaints are basically getting their water tested. And they're being told, no detection. I mean, you know what I mean, non-detect. But the numbers are listed, okay? So you can see kind of how they were clustering in different times. And it started from October sixth, where's, right here, this is um. It's like the defueling had started, but we don't know what this is, okay? All I can tell you is that it's a pattern. That's all I can tell you. But here, if somebody can answer me, why, I always have a a trick slide here. These are all the zones, fire hydrants with detections. There's sixty-four of them. This is uh the tenth of October, the twelfth of October, the eighteenth and the twenty-fourth. And then this is the ranges, so it's a histogram. Normally, histograms are like the bell curve. It should be a nice shape, like that, right? This is, this is basically um a pattern that's telling you that something's going wrong. And this one here, the ranges are between, remember, they're just, they're not EALs, open to EALs, they're just detections. These are eighteen fire hydrants that have between fifty and sixty-three, thirteen between sixty-three and seventy-six. Twenty-five between seventy-six and eighty-nine, you're getting the picture, okay? So can somebody please let me go to sleep tonight and tell me why the hydrants do this? If can, does anybody have an idea?
When you say detection, you're talking about TPH?
Yeah. Yeah, all the, all the um. All of these right here.
Okay.
Petroleum hydrocarbon D, all of these, those, this. And this guy, it's all lower than two hundred, but they're clusters.
I, you know, I can't explain it, but the hydrants are connected to their distribution system.
Yeah.
And not to the plumbing in the homes, so you gotta say if it's coming from someplace, it's coming from their. Distribution system.
I'm not saying anything, remember.
That's speculation on my part.
Well, I don't need to bring you the bad news about Red Hill. I never give you any good news. Um but you know, my brain works all the time, and so that's what I started doing with the data, is coming up with. Instead of looking at point by point and doing this stuff, I started clustering the data and that's. My presentation for you guys today that I worked hard on.
Thank you, Susan.
Susan, do you have one last, one one question that I don't know uh what members have as well, but. Uh the the two charts in the middle with the yellow.
Yeah.
Are the exceedances, those are all monitoring wells, correct?
There are these things and there's the numbers.
Yeah.
And the.
Okay.
I wanted to see the small type of the.
Monish or well.
Yeah.
Two wells, yeah.
I mean, it's uh testing what's in the aquifer, it's in the environment.
In the environment.
In the groundwater.
See, and that's scary for me. All of these are all exceedances. But all of these are TPHD and TPHO.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know it already.
Uh yeah, I thank you for your testimony.
I've taken sure it's worth a thousand.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any, so members, any questions?
Anybody?
Okay. Susan, thank you.
It's just like the city council in Maui, they'll never ask me a question because they're so afraid.
I asked you a question.
No, I I was just making a comment.
Thank you, Susan.
Alright.
Thank you guys, keep up the good work.
So, look, folks, um so with that, we're gonna, gonna um take a short break. Oh. Thank you, thank you, yes.
Yeah.
Uh remote testifying, uh will you please have Jamie in?
Um yes, Board Chair, I just admitted Miss Janie Simick.
Good afternoon.
Aloha, sorry, my throat. Aloha, thank you, Susan, for that. Amazing testimony and bringing that information to the board. Um I come here first to say a huge mahalo. For the Board of Water Supply taking a stand as strong as they have and. Holding the military accountable, not just publicly, but also privately. Um I do come bringing bad news, unfortunately, that, yes, it is. I believe the distribution and also the water lines and their failing infrastructure. That they have not maintained, but I also have concern for the rest of Oahu. Due to the fact that I, from the beginning, I have. Been affected across the island, I've testified to that, but I've also had people reach out. From across the island and most recently at Wana Loa Terrace Apartments. And they are very sick and um visible issues with their water. And they have reported it, I reported it to the EPA, got them privately in touch with Ms. Miller. Where I pause for concern is when I moved to the island in two thousand and three, I was not sick. I was not a sickly person, I was very athletic, I was, I've never been a sickly person. Um and in recent reports coming out, going all the way back to two thousand, two thousand and six specifically. I was not living on the military water line, two thousand four and five in my medical records. I have gone through my records and cross-dated spills. And when I wound up in the hospital with the same symptoms, people are presenting now. And have been presenting since twenty twenty-one. We know that this is an ongoing issue. And has been an ongoing issue for years and that the EALs just keep getting raised. I continue to plead with everybody and anybody that has a voice and has the power to do so. To not just look at Red Hill as it being affecting the military. But it's also affected our island and our people, and it's continuing to. I have. Local friends and family that I consider family that have shared video of their water, they've left the island. Um and they were all the way down by the Honolulu Zoo, and they want mu- nothing more than to return. But their children's teeth were decaying as well, she was having ovarian issues. Um this is an issue that spreads far and I plead that you continue to hold them accountable. And anybody that can get into the ear of the DOH. Um to work hand in hand to lower these EALs. I know that's not realistic at this point because we've raised them so high and allowed the contamination of the soil. And the rock bed and underneath, and the aquifer itself, we know that there's several plumes that are traveling, we know that. Things have not been handled right for years, but this is our opportunity. To turn it around and to save what is left, and the only way that we can do that. Is by truly being transparent and fighting with everything that we have. Because the symptoms don't go away, they get worse over time and they cycle. And I don't want anybody to be where I'm at. I would not give back what I've been through. Because I was. My story and others have helped push this to where it's at, and I take great honor with that. And I hope and pray daily that this issue has not gotten to the point. Where it's not remittable. But if we continue on this path, it's not gonna be remittable. And I worry about the sludge pit that they have, I worry about the sludge that they are leaving behind. The messages that I get on a weekly, sometimes daily basis. Is truly heartbreaking, and it's not just because of what's in those tanks, it's also because of what's in the aquifer. And what is traveling in these plumes and when they will release, and we don't know. And so, again, I thank you. I cannot wait for the day that I can say I'm not receiving any more reports. From the island and that, you know, they've been held, everybody's been held accountable that had a hand. In bringing this situation to where it's at at this point. But I do thank every single person on the board for giving people the platform to come forward. And for you guys to truly hear us and to go back and double-check the information that we are giving you. It, again, I will offer, if anybody wants any videos or documentation. Or messages that I've been sent, pinpointing these locations so it's easier to test. I will gladly give it to you, I will gladly tell you where my experiences were as well. Cause my daughter did get a third degree burn or second degree, she still breaks out with rashes from those burns. She had it for three months from June until her double eye surgery. We ruled out any pre-existing conditions for her eyes that caused the damage and. We're seven years later and she had to have emergent surgery again, three days' notice. She's probably gonna have to go through it again, and there's gonna be a point where that may not be possible. And it's not just her eyes that are affected, there's others. The damage that this is doing to people unsuspectingly is far outweighs. The consequences of telling the truth. And so, again, I thank you for this stand that you're taking. Um please, look into Wana Loa Terrace Apartments over by Red Hill. And um down NYKK and past the zoo area. Because I am still hearing reports of issues over there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie, if you could maybe send me some specific locations.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you so much.
Mahalo.
Mahalo, God bless.
God bless.
Okay, we're gonna take a short recess, like no more than four minutes, and then we're gonna come back in executive session to. Um to get through some of the issues before we lose forums.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Better recess. So we are reporting now from the executive session. Um it was number three, actually, in the executive session, the consult of the board's attorney and questions pertaining to the. Close class action settlement in regards to the aqueous film-forming phooms products liability litigation. Uh the board has chosen to opt out of that class action settlement. And. I'm gonna read um what has been prepared, let the record reflect, as it relates to class action settlements in regards to aqueous film-forming phooms. Products liability litigation MDL number two colon one eight. M Michael N Nancy zero two eight seven three. The Board of Water Supply authorizes and directs the manager and chief engineer to request exclusion. As a settlement class member from the settlement agreements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, number two. Financial update for the quarter ended in September thirty twenty twenty-three, Chair recognizes Joe Cooper.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Board Members. This is the financial performance report for the first quarter of FY twenty-four, running from July first to September thirtieth, two thousand. And three. During the first three months, um actual revenues was just over seven million dollars. Um versus budgeted revenues of just under sixty-nine million dollars. Operating costs were sixty, just under sixty-two million dollars, which were. Was less than the um operating cost of just over sixty-four million dollars. Um this is about two million dollars under budget of three percent and reflects our efforts to control our operating costs. Um these costs are down about nine percent from last year. Um actual net revenue, which is the net value of these two numbers, was eight point four million dollars, which was. Over the budgeted net revenue of five point three million dollars. By um three million dollars of the budget, which is good news. Um this is a breakdown of. Uh some of the cost drivers, um personnel services, almost ten point nine million dollars, which was under budget. The budget of thirteen point four million dollars, materials, supplies, and. Repairs were um twenty-two point four million dollars, under the budget of twenty-six million dollars. Um this is also six million dollars under um last year's budget, actual um equipment was a. Actually, it was a hundred thousand dol- it was um zero, um it was budgeted at a hundred thousand dollars, so um we didn't budget much for equipment purchases. During the first quarter, debt service was ten point five million dollars, which was over the budget of six point nine million dollars. This is basically due to timing differences of bonds and payments that come due um on June thirtieth. And are paid on July first, and then utilities was eight point three million dollars, which was slightly over the budgeted amount. Of eight million dollars. Um this is a breakdown of the operating cost, of the operating budget versus the actual. Um for each department, um each division, um division managers are available to discuss any. Um variances that the board has an inquiry about. Um this looks at the different cost categories as a percentage of the total operating costs. Um our largest cost category is material supplies and services, which represents thirty-six percent of our operating costs. Or twenty million dollars. Um this was down about twenty-one percent from last year. Um the next largest percentage of costs are fixed costs at twenty-nine percent or about eighteen million dollars. And this number is pretty much flat from prior years. Um the third largest category of our expenses are personnel services. Um at eighteen percent or just under eleven million dollars. Um and finally, um the fourth largest category is debt service. Um comprising about seventeen percent of our operating costs are just under eleven million dollars. This um, feel their operating costs compared to budget um for each different category. Again, personnel services, starting on the left, personnel services is nineteen percent under budget. Equipment and material and supplies is fifteen percent under budget. Equipment is essentially um on budget or under budget by a hundred thousand dollars. Debt service is over budget by three point six million dollars and fixed cost is six percent um over budget, yes.
I just have a quick question, why why is debt service so off or?
Debt service is off because it's mostly a timing difference that payments. Payments are made July first or due July first and when they're recognized versus when they're actually paid. So I think that they they were paid in July first and they were, and that boosted the amount, I think on our fiscal services. Um they were recognized in June thirtieth, so it shifted, it's basically a timing difference between. When they were recognized and when they were actually paid. Yeah.
Okay.
Because, because bonds are paid, we we pay, on on our bonds, we pay interest only in January, and again, that's something that. We're um recording it often in December, doing it, and then um interest and principal is paid. July first, um we actually transmit the money um in the prior. The prior month, so it's a timing difference of when they're entering, um and they do kind of a a dance. Um to move money between our fiscal, our financial accounting system. And our budget accounting system to our cash basis accounting system. And so that, I mean, I recognize there's a difference. This graph um shows our operating costs on both the monthly. This graph um shows our operating costs on both a monthly basis and a year-to-date basis. And on a year-to-date basis, our operating costs are three point one one percent um under budget. Um, our op- average monthly operating expenditures average around twenty million dollars. Here's similarities, this is a a summary of our revenue on both a monthly and a year-to-date basis. Um, revenues are just under two percent or one point eight seven percent over budget. Meaning that we got slightly more, one point three million dollars, um more in revenues than we budgeted um water sales. Um, revenue from water sales was consistent with last year, um with September generating. More revenues than um July, August. That concludes um the first quarter financial report. Are there any other questions or comments?
Members, any questions? Very none. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Joe, you're coming to the next meeting too, right?
Yes, I'll be at the next meeting.
Thank you, Joe.
The December meeting.
Yes, the December meeting.
Okay.
Okay, um, moving on to item from information, number three, capital improvement program quarterly update. Chair recognizes JD and Rosaki. Hello.
Uh.
Pre-patient, JD.
Thank you, Board Chair and Board members. Uh, this is the quarterly report for the capital improvement program for all divisions. For the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty three. In the first quarter of fiscal twenty four, we had four contracts that were awarded that totaled just about six million dollars. There were eight contract completions reported and the details are on this slide as well as the next slide. The next slide is our graph, which has been updated to include the current fiscal year twenty twenty four, so. Um, it's first quarter, just started, so there's a dot that starts our process for this fiscal year. Um, it's at four percent. Uh, again, first quarter is historically low, however, this year is slightly higher than normal. Similar to what we had in fiscal year twenty twenty at three point five percent. And that concludes my update. I'm available for any questions that you folks may have.
Thank you. Members, any questions? I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, JD.
Moving on, item from information number four, schedule of monthly board meetings for calendar year twenty twenty four. Chair recognizes our manager, Lau.
Uh, thank you. And in the report, we have our full schedule here of of board meetings for twenty twenty four. Uh, so please uh let the Board Secretary, Joy, know if there's any problems or things that need to be changed.
Just, yeah, we'll just ask that, um, uh, Joy, if you could follow up on a specific strand with this. Um, so that we can respond to it, if you haven't already.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's follow in the same structure as we have before. Fourth Monday, two P M.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, any questions, members? Are you none? Thank you, Ernie.
Kind of hard to stop today, so sorry.
Okay, um, you know what? Can you just uh, can you just stand so we can close the meeting? I gotta, I gotta a motion to close, yeah? Thank you, Brian, for uh sticking out and and keeping us uh in forum. We appreciate it. Um, if we could, you folks, for the numbers five and six, Barry and Jason, if you guys could just send an email with an update. Uh, in case anybody has any questions specific to your your guys' sections, and we appreciate your guys.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
So move.
So with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to um. Adjourn, thank you. Moved by uh Member Conasira.
Second, but.
Thank you, Jane. Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, all opposed, Nick? Hearing none, uh, motion passes, meeting is adjourned at five oh one P M. Thanks, everyone.